Okay, I'd like to call to order the Pennsyl County Regional School Committee meeting of Thursday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, August 20th, 2019. Roll call, Wayne Adams.
Here.
Bill Buell.
Here.
Emily Dwyer.
Here.
Marie Falzani.
Here.
Dick Hodges.
Here.
Lisa O'Connor here. Chris Redding.
Here.
Deana Trotter. And Joanna Blanchard and Nad here. So I'd like to all rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I receive a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Can I receive a motion to accept the minutes of the business meeting of July 23rd, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Chris Epstein, okay. And the next item is school committee, I'm sorry, school committee subcommittee updates. So we've decided to add on to the agendas to go through all of the subcommittees to see if there's any updates or meetings scheduled or anything like that. We know that the finance subcommittee meets right before every meeting here. So I guess we're just going to go through all of them and see if there's any updates. So, teaching, learning, and accountability, if there's anything.
Who's May?
No, you have.
Late May?
Okay, no meetings scheduled. And policy, Marie?
No, I didn't get that answer. So, we're submitting the rest of the J-classes tonight for vote. And we have a meeting next Tuesday at 9:00 in the green room at Middle School. And we're making our way.
B coming up next.
And Deana does communications, I don't think there's any updates on that one. We don't have human resources anymore, and like I said, finance meets every week. So, do you have any updates on that one?
Nope. We keep paying bills, we keep moving. We're in good shape financially, cash flow.
Thank you. Okay, so next item on the agenda is public comment. I don't see any public, I see all principals. The next item on the agenda is superintendent news, budget recap and convocation.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. So, a budget recap, I'm just going to give you the, you'll hear this first, convocation is next Wednesday, and it's 8:00 to 8:45. If you want to go there and sit kind of in an area, I think the front center is usually good, if school committee wants to sit there, that way I can recognize you can stand up and people hopefully will thank you for the work you're doing here. But, at that, I'm going to drive home some points about our budget. One is that we received this year $43,000 less than what we have received, than what we received fiscal year '19, and our student population is about the same, has gone up a little bit. A function of that is, of course, we don't, we're not accepting school choice students. And we have some school choice students who are still coming out. So when last year's graduating class left, there was some money from there we were taking in, and we're no longer getting that. But, that trend of, a downward trend is not a good trend. And if you compare us towards, to all other, all the districts around us, including regional districts, Pennsyl received the smallest increase in their Chapter 70 money. Most of all the districts, aside from Newburyport, are held harmless, were held harmless, but our increase is relatively, it was .3 percent was our increase. So, that's our budget news. But, on a better side, we're going to get to the billion update later on, and that's a little bit of good news. I have some good news and bad news, so you can direct your attention up here to the screen. So, this is something, we started off West Newbury, had its bicentennial. And there's a lot of pretty events that we went on with that, finished off with the big fiber display at Pice State. Merrimack, last weekend, two weeks, had its home days. Roland has its Roland Days coming up in two weeks. So it's coming up very shortly, but one of the, hold on a second. One of the events.
You want the lights off?
There was a pie eating contest.
You want the lights off?
Yeah, that's right. Because I had to go present. So it was a pie eating contest. And you can see that Selecton Joe Green on the right, you have Representative Mira on the left. We also had Cheers. We had several people. Selecton Moran was there, she was there. So, food news is, Kentucky was in the competition. The sad news is, I really like the picture here, Green. So Ben Volle spent the entire day emceying the event. And I think he just did a fabulous job. He's having these pictures, he has this video for your entertainment, we'll see it later. I can only apologize, I finished second in this competition, I did not win.
It was a fix.
There we go.
It was an investigation.
So there's, we have video evidence. But then it was a great event, and I think, you know, for kids to go and just have a family round, we love going to these. I don't know that people really appreciate their own town's celebrations as much as I do.
I think what I'd like to throw in too is the fact that the community appreciated having teachers there.
Yeah.
From the schools, even some didn't live in Merrimack. And that was, they said, hey, there's so-and-so, and that's a very cool thing for the kids.
Yeah, and there, so there's teachers from the town that were helping to organize it, but the kids are, I mean, it's, they do everything from the little grades all the way up to adults, there's stuff for everybody. And it sounds like that's the way West Newbury was run, and that's the way Roland's done, but the towns just do an excellent job, and it's pretty cool to have all that happen. Also at that, there was art put up and displayed at Donahue. And that art was put up before they started hosing down Donahue to light the bonfire, which was right there in the softball field. So, as I was watching that fire go up, my heart was pitter-pattering. Another bit of good news, we had Brandon Baru, who's a rising, not Mr. Seymour, he's a rising senior. Both he and a former student here, Casey Sato, they both were, won the world championships at the Drum Corps International Open Classic World Championships, and that was in Marion, Indiana. So hopefully, I've sent him a separate note, but I thought it's good to get that out there. And, you know, I know his mother was extremely excited. But, you know, these are kids who have been dedicating their lives to playing music, and it's just really cool to see Kentucky kids being recognized on the winning world titles. Of course, everybody knows athletics is underway. We, football started last Friday. Thursday, all the other sports start. There are new regulations, so Mr. Thornton and Coach C, our trainer, she, they both know that they have to have wet globe temperatures that could take into account. So basically, if it's 86 degrees or higher, they're not allowed to play. There's a whole policy the MIA has put together that has to be followed. So there are some things, and the idea is to protect the students, whether or not, you know, so we'll see how that goes. And then, of course, today and yesterday, we had our admin retreat. Yesterday was just administrators, central office administrators, building administrators. Today, in addition to those, we had three school committee members. We had Mr. Adams, Mr. Hodges, and Ms. Falzani were all in attendance, as well as all department chairs. And we also had union representatives from all the building and a couple of teachers as well. So it was two very, very busy days. And Mr. Conway and I are very excited, along with the principals, to be able to finish off our two-day marathon with the school committee meeting right now, tonight. So, but it's been a very busy day, and every second of it's worth it, because everything we're doing is going to be for the kids, and making sure they're having the best opportunities they can.
Both of you did an outstanding job this morning.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, you know, Mr. Conway asked how it go, people ask how it goes, it's hard for me to say, I'm in it.
It was top drawer.
We do our best, thank you. I appreciate that. So that's, that's all from the superintendent's news.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the alternative learning days.
You done with the video?
No.
No, I'm going to need that in a little bit. So, alternative learning days. I'll start, Mr. Conway, I'm sure would like to chime in, or will chime in.
Only at your direction.
Yeah, sure. So, as we know, last year, we went to have the pilot for an alternative learning day, the concept being that on a day when there was no school, instead of tacking it on at the end of the year where we feel like it's less valuable because testing and assessments take place in April, in March, it'd be better to have that day where students, even though they're home, had access to some work that was fitting for their curriculum, what they were doing, the scope and sequence of their curriculum at that time. The Department of Education has not, not said that we can't do it, it's, what they've essentially said is that they are no longer promoting this, and that we need to follow all state, local, and federal laws as it pertains to education. So, for my, we know at Pennsyl, the feedback we got was very positive, but it sounds like they might have had some issues in other places. So it appears as though, for the time being, we are in a holding pattern on whether or not we will move forward with alternative learning, primarily the issue being that we don't want to put teachers through all the prep work and getting things ready and send out notifications to the parents, just to find as we continue to dig deeper that we're absolutely, we cannot do it. There's an hour requirement, we need to meet that hour requirement. And right now, the high school, I might understand is, the high school is the closest to being just at that hour requirement. So, if we did alternative learning days, that would, appears now, it might not be able to count. But, we're going to continue to investigate. Am I missing anything on that?
Yeah, I mean, the state had issued, two years ago, issued a memo to, to all of the districts saying, we understand many districts are exploring their options, we encourage you to explore them and report back to us, tell us what you're doing. Many districts did that, and many districts were doing very similar to the experience that we had last year, that's what they had planned. And then the state over the winter and into the spring convened a group of districts who had been participating, and basically determined that you can't do it, more or less, unless you fulfill all of the laws, which are, really what they're saying is, you can't not go to school and miss six and a half hours of school if you're only working from home for two hours. And what if students aren't working from home, and so forth, and all of this. And, yeah, I think we're hesitant to ask, they did say that districts who had been using it may continue to do so for this academic school year.
So we could make.
The 19, 20 school year.
Yeah.
But that, in the 2021 school year, all those districts must, must follow all the prior guidelines regarding school hours. That's really what it boils down to.
So you can give us your feelings on it, I mean, we follow the direction of the school committee. If you want us to seek out and continue to find ways to make alternative learning a possibility on those days, we can go ahead and see what we can absolutely do, and what we absolutely cannot do. We're just looking for a little direction.
I think it's valuable, I think you should, if you'd like a motion, I think you should continue to explore it, especially with the administrators. I'm sure say at the high school, if each course covers a certain number of hours to complete, that will meet that requirement. I'm sure it's very different in the elementaries, but I think for the community, for the students, I think it's a very valuable exercise, so I would ask you to continue to explore it.
Amen.
Oh, Kristen Memory.
Yeah, no, I agree, I think, as my daughters can attest, the work at the middle school and the high school was definitely more than they thought they would do during the regular day, plus they had homework on top of it. Not having an elementary student, I don't know how that experience was, and if that's an area, I don't know what alternatives could be done. I definitely think learning during a snow day is going to get more done than learning in the middle or late June. I get, I get the hours thing, but if you actually look at the tangible learning, I was a teacher, there was no comparison.
I don't think the teachers, the students, or administrators would disagree with that point.
If they, oh, excuse me.
I agree with Chris and Bill said, and just other parent feedback that I got, was, are you going to continue with that, because that worked out really well, you know, it was, as you said, more beneficial than having them in, watching movies at the end of June, or, you know, doing whatever you tend, because they're hot, and you're trying to fit in the hours, make the days work. So I think, I mean, I don't know what the teacher feedback was on it, but I know they were excited for it initially, and then after we actually used it.
Yeah, sure.
I don't really know what the feedback on that was, but I know that the parents and my three kids enjoyed, I mean, they were, it was good.
I was curious about the state, just two years ago, when they were promoting it, and after two years, they've picked up valid data to say, okay, it's, we no longer want to promote it after two years. So, I think we should continue to investigate, as you said, because if they can switch, change their mind in two years, why not change their mind again and get back on board with it? Or certainly share with us their reasons why it wasn't with any validity at all functional.
I think they did, they did share their concerns, but not necessarily writing to districts. You know, I mean, their main concern was, a lot of it was technology-based, and for those students who don't have access to technology. So if Pennsyl was allowed to continue to do it, for instance, are there districts that don't, maybe don't have the same household access to technology that Pennsyl does, and they have an equity issue across the state? And I don't, I don't know if I'd go so far the state set were promoting it. I think districts started to bend the rules to try and find a way to do it, so that what the state said is, okay, here's some guidelines, go ahead and try it, we'll talk to you about how it's going. In the end, those who really were in charge of the decisions had some real concerns around, around the technology and access issue. They were concerned around special education services, and, and they were concerned about the hours on time. I, I feel as though we can win a debate on the hours and the quality of work. As far as the other issues go, I understand that they're coming from a different perspective than, than what we're wrong.
And I think the worst part is, we went, we went and ran this pilot, I think for us, feedback was good, it went well, but we didn't get, we didn't get the opportunity to send to them, say, hey, you made this decision, why didn't you ask us how it went? Why weren't we at, why didn't we have a voice in saying, hey, this, it went really well here, here's what we did, here's what our plan was? And I know they have our plan.
Yeah, they do, they have it. My sense is, they went into that meeting and that session where they.
They knew what was going to happen.
Those who were going to make the decision had already made up their mind, so.
Did you have a?
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, my son went through this, and he's learning it's not always easy for him. I was a little apprehensive about some of the online components as well, and I felt like he, you know, the special education teachers at Vagnell were able to adapt for the people who needed that, things to be adapted. And he actually, I think, had a great experience, both, you know, and they had reading, math, writing, and some other, as well as, I mean, they had art practice, they had an art job to do. And it took longer than I was expecting he was going to spend on it, honestly, but it was sort of valuable in a lot of ways. And I was sitting there going, I'm going to have another day in June, and he was getting a lot out of it. So, I think that there are a lot of beneficial pieces that I was not expecting as a parent
As I hear the committee speak, I think, you know, we borrowed a lot in our plan from Wakefield. And Wakefield's vision for alternative learning days was not really Blizzard Bag. Their, their vision was really a combined vision of, their model was called Learn Anywhere, Learn Anywhere Wakefield, or something to that effect. And the idea was, yes, we could use them in the winter when we had snow days, in limited capacity, three, four days a year, but we could also begin to expand its use into other domains, and that, you know, and that students could end up being able to take learning outside of the classroom and from a digital perspective, and be able to do things. So, I'm, I'm interested maybe to connect with the folks in Wakefield who I'd previously spoken with to see, what are you doing about this? You know, I think we worry about asking the teachers to continue to plan and do all this, only for the state to say that, oh, you can't do that after this year. We can do this year what we had done, that's not a problem. But to ask them to continue to plan, knowing that we're not going to be able to do it in the future, I don't know.
So, we'll explore, we'll keep pushing it, if we can reach through to the folks, to those decision makers, and just kind of explain what we're doing and how we're meeting all those needs that they're concerned about. Because I think, when, you know, where the rubber meets the road is that the, would echo that sentiment, that the time that they spent, I think all of us who have kids, the time that they spent working on that was far more valuable on that snow day than at the end of the day, and I think that term, like the hot days and where it's teachers or training, it's tough, it's tough.
But also it shows the kids that they're always learning. What they're doing in that building that they call school is applicable in other parts of their life.
And everywhere.
And I actually think that the art was the most noticeable way of that, where it's like, they can work on a perspective, or something like that. And was, you know, draw something your family, or, and the older kids just look out the window and draw what you see. And so, it's like to know that what they're doing in school is actually part of their rest of their life. It's so important.
And I love that you gave that as an example, because my daughter, my youngest daughter is in elementary school, and same thing, she had to draw a picture, and then go outside and try to create that in the snow, and take, and, you know, just use her cell, had to use, not her cellphone, but use her cell phone, take a picture, and then take a picture of what she did in the snow, and that's what gets submitted. I mean, that's.
Chris?
And I also think the day that we did that alternative learning day, the, my three girls, who pretty much never see each other during the school day, and don't interact a lot, they were interacting, they were, oh, look at what I'm doing here, and like, things like that, even like, oh, well, we have to do this thing, and there was a lot of interaction that I thought was kind of cool that day, too.
It's good feedback.
My senior didn't like it.
Yes, I know, because they didn't get the day off, just outright, yeah.
Any other comments? The next item, so we're not going to take a vote. So should we?
Yeah.
Okay, still explore it. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the district strategic plan.
So, after year one, where there's the entry plan, you go through and do anything, the culmination of that is, or, not the end culmination, but it builds up to the strategic plan. You have in your packet a two-page document, which is essentially the strategic plan. But, there's no way I could possibly just give you a detailed packet without going to an in-depth explanation, because this is not a very simple process of how we arrived to this. So. So, when we were, we were collecting all this information, we had to think about, okay, what are we going to consider? And there are all sorts of considerations. You have data from all over the place, we have thousands of data back from the survey, but you have interviews, observations, parent comments, school committee comments, you have all that information. So there's plenty of feedback. The functionality is a big thing for me. And we, if you go to a building committee meeting, you'll always hear me talk about functionality. We don't care what it looks like, we want it to be functional. I, I'm not interested in a strategic plan document that exists just for the sake of having a document. I want a document that anyone in the public can go to, they see what our goal is, and they know what we're going to be doing. And they don't just know what we're going to be doing, they know what the district's going to do, and they know what each school is going to be doing about that as well. And we've talked a little bit about school improvement plans. The prior one that was here was a building capacity plan, and it was much more of a narrative. It was, I think, several pages. I think I remember when Ms. Dwyer and Ms. Redding came down, I was, said, I couldn't find the strategic plan, I was wondering where it was, and it's something called a building capacity, but it's a very much a multi-page narrative about the direction the district's going in. So I had the opportunity, and I didn't have the opportunity, I had the duty to go ahead, and I researched the heck out of it, and certainly in the new superintendent induction program, they have a whole bunch of varieties, but there is no one template. And people have different ideas about what a document should be, what a strategic plan should look like. To me, that document is about functionality, and it's about being to take it and edit the actions, and making sure you have actions, and that you follow through with what you're going to do. So the accessibility is, everyone needs to be able to see this. When we talk about transparency, if your district's going down a particular path, you better make sure that everyone has access to see what that path is. And accountability, SMART goals, those are very detailed, very specific, from a district standpoint, we're probably not going to put out specific SMART goals until we have enough data. And at this point, we've changed assessment so much in MCAS that we really don't have that data. So we can put out, though, you want accountability goals in there. And then the last point that's up there, I wanted to make sure that the school improvement plans were blended into and followed the district initiatives. So, there are four goals in that strategic plan. The first one, and you can see it up there, is school culture and communication. On the right is the description of it. Students' employees will collectively feel that the school building and entire school district is a supportive microcosm of the community where they feel respected, challenged, and celebrated. Similarly, all stakeholders will feel that this culture is founded in, on a consistent two-way approach whereby, where they are kept informed about academics, activities, and opportunities. I'm going to stand if that's okay. So, some of the key things, you need to have a supportive environment, that comes in a different objective. But also, that two-way communication, we spoke about that quite a bit at our admin retreat. If you don't get to just pump stuff out, we're going to pump stuff out. You need to listen when things come back. You need to have opportunities to get feedback and to make adjustments. So the priorities, you can see 1-1, 1-2, 1-3, 1-4. For 1-1, you have, obviously, those communications we're talking about. And one of the big things we discussed was academic progress. No one really enjoys a quarter coming to an end, the last assignment, so quarter ends November 5th, the last assignment graded was October 1st, and then all of a sudden, 20 assignments get plugged in there, and I go as a student, I go from a B down to a D. Nobody likes that, because there's no heads up. Fortunately, Infine Campus kind of takes that out of, out of the situation a lot less, as we talked about today. Work is being assigned, and it's being graded and stacked over on the side, stacked, 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 and it never gets put in. Well, to me, if that work's not getting put in, it wasn't important, and the child's not getting feedback. Or maybe it wasn't important, the child's not getting feedback. So that constant communication there, but also extra creative opportunities, things like that, everyone, that's important. 1-2, roles and responsibilities. We have way too many people going to the wrong folks for services. We are not good at that. I've been working on a table of organization, and we talk about central office for the new building, it comes into play, and we're going to be renovating the new, the new central office, central services building, about what that's going to look like, who's going to be positioned where. We have people in certain spots that should be working with other folks that aren't, and that communication piece and understanding who to go to is a problem. You'll hear, you'll see more detail later on, I talk about developing an ombudsman link. An ombudsman being one of those, big institutions have these, in European countries they have them, it's that one person who knows, you go to that person, and you're a student, and you're having a problem with whatever you need to, so it's like choosing your own adventure, you click on your role of a parent, what are you looking to do? Are you looking to do something with human resources, special ed, academics? So you go down, and it sends you to a link. And that final end page of all those links has on it, this is the person you need to talk to, here's the district policies that are affiliated with it, and here's any documents that you might need to complete when meeting with that specific person. As opposed to, you call the superintendent's office, and then you get sent down to the school, and then they send you to Dr. Jarvis, and that, so we have to get out of that business, it's confusing. 1-3, people in the building have a voice, and it's listened to. And I said this to the principals, and I said this today, I survey, once or twice a year, teachers, students, stakeholders, and parents will get a survey. That survey we take, we sit down, we break it down by school, we take it as an entire district, and we make adjustments from that. That's a voice that we're listening to. On the school side, they can take it as it's applicable to them, and they can make adjustments based on the perception of how they're doing. But people have to have a voice, and they need to know their adjustments will be made based on their voice. The accomplishments. I think we do a good job on Twitter, recognizing people, but there's basic things like the Teacher of the Month, schools all did last. teacher of the month, schools all did last year. I know the high school and middle school, not that I'm trying to, I was trying to be elementary schools, but I think Mr. Seymour started, and Mr. Kelly stole, because little ratings were, it was teacher of the month. And it's just a simple thing. But Massachusetts has a teacher of the year process, and we've just never done. So I think those pieces are big in recognizing not just teachers, but you have community members, you have alumni, you have students, like we talked about, Brandon, like his, getting them here in front of you so that you can see that the work, you can see the work they're doing, that's really important. So, objective 2, curriculum, data, and support. So PRC will ensure that all students are part of the creative data stack of the program, that it's all delivered and all based on data. All right. I'm not going to go on this for too long, because I'm going to go on this for a long time. And basically, the second half of today, Mr. Conley talked about, we use data to make decisions. We use data to make decisions. That is all there is to it. You don't just get to go, oh, my gut says. Sometimes that's good. But if you're not looking at data, if you're not accustomed to understanding how data works and what it's indicating, then we need to get that support and that help on understanding what that data means. The classic examples were this morning, this afternoon that we looked at. If someone goes from 102 to a score of 104, is that student doing better than the student who started on a 35 and goes up to an 83? Okay? A lot of it is, it depends. You can say, yeah, that first student is higher achieving than the second student, but you can also say that second student has shown tremendous growth compared to the first student. So there's a lot of ways to look at it. But never before, not within recent time, have the principals had folks in place that could help break apart that data to give it to the teachers in a way that was meaningful and makes sense. And data doesn't just have to be about numbers. I used that example this morning. If a kid crying on a playground is data. Right? That's a piece of information you have. You need to take that, and you can make a decision based on that. You just don't say, oh, that kid's a six on a scale, so he's a ten. Our support was the biggest piece that gained back on comments from both parents, I'm sorry, from both teachers and from students. So students felt like, when I'm in a classroom and I don't understand something, I don't always have the opportunity to go to that teacher and get the help before school, after school, or during school. And teachers felt like, hey, sometimes in the classroom, I'm trying to juggle a whole lot, and there's no one there to give me that support, or I'm not quite sure what I'm supposed to do with all this data. So those were the two big pieces. So, the objective priorities, recruit development, support teachers, administrators. 2-2, all students have access to high-quality educational experience, incorporate technology. That is a big deal. We all heard that. We've been developing the technology plan. So incorporating technology will continue to become a big theme in this district in order to maximize written opportunities. Assessment data, informative and summative, will be consistently utilized in terms of those past great introductions, earlier lectures. And 2-4, all students and all staff will have access to their peers who have any professional support they need in order to be successful. You want to always put people in a position to be successful, and sometimes peer support is some of the best. Objective, the big third objective is protocols and procedures. This speaks directly to what I said about the table of organization. But it's also, we won't hold this today. I don't like getting a document where I'm either Paul Livingston or Jeffrey Malquin or Michael Wofford. I'm none of those people. Yet, there's stationery, there's documents that can be used and submitted to central office that have those names on it for me to approve field trips or any other variety of things. We don't have a central location where all documents are set. It is incredibly simple for us to do that, and not only is it simple for us to do, if we have to make a change, you only have to make a change in one spot. So that's something we definitely have to organize, make sure everyone's using the same documents, and they're following the same procedures. And if you do that, time will be able to be increased spent on student marketing. So 3-1, chain of command is established, so stakeholders know, well, no matter what, who they got to go to to find out the information they need. Development of clear procedures for students, parents, and employees to follow, and that areas of what we're talking about, that are consistent across the district. Or we say this, 4, we need to be a school district, not a district of schools. 3-3, we employ the effective and efficient business management system, finance, transportation, maintenance, child nutrition group, HR, and technology services. We do that pretty well. We do that pretty well. But there's some areas we can definitely improve. And review, revise, and consistently practice all safety procedures. We do that well. At some places, we don't do that super well in others. One of the things I really do appreciate is that we have an outstanding relationship with the chiefs, with the chiefs, with the prior chiefs. They meet with us once a month, and we go over, we do table talks, we go through scenarios, so we can see gaps in our, in our protocol. And the principals are there, so they understand what the adjustments are that we have to make. So that's 3. 4, this is the obvious one, our facilities and the building project, that one's going to be on the docket, not just in 2022, but probably through 2024, until we're fully moved in, the fields are done. But in the meantime, we need to make sure we're taking care of facilities. Number 1, school complaints about our facilities, number 1 complaint, there were several about facilities. Number 1 complaint with bathrooms. Okay, well, we upgraded some of our bathrooms, but they still are upgraded to the 19, they went from the 1950s now to maybe the 1970s. It's not great. We're not going to pump in a lot of money into either one of these buildings, but we do want them to be a place where kids, it's okay for them to go to the bathroom, things aren't going to be falling apart. The other issues are things we know about, we know about that as well, but kids complain that it's too hot and too cold, and it can be too hot in this room and too cold in the room next to you. If you took a tour of the buildings, you understand why that is, and there's not much we can do about that. But for our strategies, so we need to address any infrastructure issues in each building. So, all the buildings are unique. The principals understand that if it's something with, if they're in one of the three towns in an elementary school, it's over 10,000, that actual capital project, and that needs to be addressed all the town. Mr. Haddon knows very well, does an exceptional job at creating that list, and one of the things we talked about is more collaboration with the schools, prioritizing these needs are based on feedback they hear from students, teachers, people making work in the building. So allocate, so in terms of new building, we want to make sure we allocate our resources so that we create the optimal learning environment. So, anyone who's on that, so Elaine Johnson's here, Emily, is that it? I don't care what the building looks like. We want it to look nice. It's a big chunk of money. But we need to make sure that the spaces are not going to be exceptional learning spaces for the students. They're not going to be great for just the next 10 years, but they're going to be great for the next 30 or 40. And 4-3 up there, just making sure the towns are in tune with what's going on. One of my big pushes or commitments this year, we went through, we did the vote, so I know that September, I think the 2nd, 2nd week in September, I'm going to be in my school read, giving an update on the building project, where we are. And that's something that we need to do. I need to go and just make sure people are aware of what's going on. And we, last year, started out our year, I think in August, but might have been September, school committee asked me to put together a contingency plan if something should happen. But we need to update that contingency plan. The numbers shifted, so those are all things we need to make sure of. So, this next part here, what does this mean for our schools? How do we know what's happening? So that's a great question. And if you look at each one of these, there are priorities, and you look at your sheet, you'll notice that they're hyperlinked, every single one of them. So if I go, yes, if I go to all those hyperlinks, I click on it, there you go. So you have right there, there's, that's the priority, that's 1.1, school culture and communication, so free communication, district action items, the evidence, who's responsible, and the check. So this document serves not just for... So this is what is the district's, right here. But then each school, they haven't done this yet, because this needs to be approved, but the plan needs to be approved by the school committee first. Each school will then go take this to their school council, and their individual schools will put in here how they will address that priority. So every single one of these has a link. Right now, every single one of them has a link, and has everything from the district. Most of them are 3 or 4, but if you look, I don't think you have the ability to look at it yet. 2-2, 2-2 has about 12 bullet points out of the district, because it focuses heavily on curriculum instruction. There's so much going on that has, most. So this document is designed to be interactive for the people, for not just the people who are looking at it, but for the schools as well. And those schools will be able to see what theirs are, and they'll also be able to see what the other schools are doing. We expect there might be some overlapping as the first school goes in. The one part on this that we need to add in is there needs to be a check-in. So you need to have, how are we doing halfway through the year, and how are we progressing at the end of the year? So let's school council first in the beginning. They should reevaluate their, their school improvement plans halfway through, how are we progressing, and at the end, how do we progress on that. Is anybody having questions on this, except for the doc? Yes?
So this is a technical question. So when we get the packet, it's a PDF, so we can't actually click on those hyperlinks?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, so, so...
In the future, how can we do that?
So I did that on purpose.
Okay.
I asked for your question. It wasn't done by accident, because Mr. Haddon and I were still working on the fourth one, and I didn't want to view it for something that was going to constantly change. We think we've got it pretty much nailed down for goal 4, but now, it's easy enough. I mean, I can just, so even in a PDF, you should be able, you'll be able to click on the link, but it's not, you have right now a scanned PDF of the document, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I can give you the live to the priorities. What I, what I need tonight is more of that first two-page document that you have a PDF of. And then we go over school improvement plans, which we have slated for October, I believe.
Correct.
Sometime in October, and we're trying to hold slated this for, for...
I have a motion and a comment. So can I move the, the strategic plan that's presented? Second?
Any discussion?
My discussion is actually, is there a chance that we could not leave all of the school improvement plans in one night, because I felt that was really overwhelming last year.
Yeah, so I think in this format, I think you could probably, you'll have access to it, so I'll make it...
Yeah, I just know it spreads out a little more. That was, although there were a lot of places where they came together. It was a lot of schools in all those.
So you mean maybe like secondary one night, elementary a different night?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll take that. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the student handbooks.
Can we put the list back on?
I don't know. I'm waiting for someone to say it's okay to turn the light on. Yeah, you can put the light on. Okay. So, the student handbooks, the student handbooks are supposed, are to be approved by the school committee. They're, one of the nice pieces this summer, so the elementary schools. I know the principals and the assistant principals got together to make sure all of their handbooks match, with the exception of unique things that have to do with dismissal, arrival, because their schools structurally are different where people go. So we have here the principals, and if you have any questions about their handbook, you can absolutely ask away. Yes, sir?
One of the things, and this may have changed, I haven't checked recently, but I noticed that if I click on the website for the high school, on that left-hand column, one of the things that's there is the handbook. So it's an easy click to get in there. That's not necessarily true with the other schools, and I'm wondering if the elementaries, as well as the middle school, could do that. Now, they may have done it by now, but if they have not, I'd like to make that request.
Clap on. Absolutely. Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we have a problem with that at all.
Parents should not have to go hunting through the entire, to try and find a handbook. They ought to be right there on the front page, homepage.
Yep, we can absolutely, you want in a place that's accessible, not a problem.
Thank you.
Marie? She has a big stack of them.
So I thought they were really good, and I appreciate you putting all the work into that. I just have one kind of, I appreciate you put the policy in where needed. I would just double-check, because a lot of the policies, we put in more J policies, and they were all just redone. So they may not be the same way in the code of conduct that they will on the website. I mean, no fault of your own, like, we just finished them recently.
That's okay. And I think one of the, so one of the nice things with it being digital is it's an easy switch in, switch out. Now, I see you, you have things marked up?
I did.
Okay.
But I mean, I wouldn't go through all of them. Like, there was some titles that there's no sense in going through all those. It was like, you know, Dr. Malquin, and that type of thing. Yeah.
Whose handbook was that in?
Fine, fine, I'm going to say. So really, basically, it was mostly about just checking the policies against what's been redone, just so that it reads similarly. And then...
We, if I, one solution to that is when we put them online, for instance, sort of a statement above that any references to school committee policy should always be checked to the district website, and the actual policy, because school committee policies are frequently revised versus publication date. So some statement to that effect would be appropriate.
You know, some titles are no big deal, but some, like this one on Cyberbullying says, "Do create user posts with anonymous names and accounts in or pretend to be someone else." So, do not. Yeah. So like some of those.
Now, can, would you be willing to share with us?
If I'm the thing that you're speaking about, so share. Sure. And the other question, the other concern I had, that was in a few of them, so we had discussed it at a policy meeting, is the dress code. It's really geared towards females, the restrictions and the...
Which handbook is that?
Both middle and high school. It says, "Examples of inappropriate tank tops, cap shorts, spaghetti strips, halter tops. Tops are low-cut bottoms that carry the midriff. Tops with low-cut necklaces, shorts and skirts, mid-thigh, or longer than they may be worn." I just, oh, and then this one just reads funny. "Outside coast jackets must be removed before entering."
And our policy doesn't, our policy doesn't state that.
No, but that's what I mean. We talked about the policy saying that it's a slippery slope to start targeting certain gender groups and things like that.
Sizes and all of them.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Seymour, Mr. Kelly, we can get together on that and come up with more appropriate one.
So should Marie go into like the middle school or the elementary next?
Whatever sheet. I think they're here, it looks like they're...
And then just things, we've done this on policy, too. In the high school one, it said, you know, there's a section for academic integrity, and the guiding suggestion lists Wellesley High student handbook, Langley High School. We, like, we developed a policy, too, like, might have borrowed from Newbury Court. Went back and realized we still had Newbury Court listed when it should be in the docket.
Those were just simply there to cite the test where some of the copy and some of the concepts came from, wanted to cite our sources.
Okay.
So maybe instead of just having the high school parenthetically, it needs...
Below it lists Brent's information, his number, and assistant superintendent role, but then has Mike Jarvis's email. So just like little, you know, not big deal.
So I have a question. Well, I have a comment and a question. I shall, I would stay on. I'm happy that all the elementary handbooks now all coincide together, because I know before when we reviewed it, and I was on the board, they were all very different. And I had, that bothered me a great deal, so I'm happy they're all the same now. And these handbooks are up for approval, but I'm apprehensive myself on approving them, knowing that they still need correction. So I'm not quite sure how to go about a motion to approve something that needs to be corrected, but schools start... But school starts in a couple of weeks.
Madam Chair, could we move to make the improvements so that we move that forward? Because it sounds like it's, it's really easy stuff to just sit down and do some quick edits.
Or even conditional on the improvements. We could approve the handbooks.
Does that sound okay?
On the updating thing.
With everybody? Okay, so would you like to make that motion though?
I would move that we approve the student handbooks conditional on the improvements and updates being made.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Emily, do you have?
There's that question. Thank you for going through those for us. So would we just get copies of them? We can make edits or how will that work? Just want to make sure we have that in time.
Are you okay with that? Yeah.
Yeah, overall, I thought they were awesome. The only other thing I noticed, there was a section in the elementary schools that says, "What to do if you have a concern." And just like my own feedback, I think that's a great place, or maybe somewhere else in the book, to mention the anonymous tip that you were speaking about this morning. Because I didn't see any mention of that in any of the handbook. And I think it's a great resource and for parents to be able to see that on the handbook, I think would be good.
We'd love that by tomorrow.
So I guess what she's asking is there any chance you're willing to par with those right now since they can go and make the changes?
But she gets them back to make sure they change.
Yes. Hey, yeah, yeah, so that's, that's important. You'll get these.
But I like positive feedback. I think overall, they were really well autoed.
So you'll get these, but don't remove the tabs. And when you're done with them, please bring them back to the main office.
I just did one of them.
Yeah.
Oh, I just did one of them.
Oh, great. All my tabs.
So, thank you, Ms. Ozai, thank you so much. Really, really appreciate it. And this is also why, you know, on the policy stuff, same thing. Catch it, really appreciate it.
I've got some other things in my office if you want.
Well, it's good when you have a stack that big and your kids will fight you on some of these. I'm like, fuck off.
The next item on the agenda is the J policies. So the committee met, went over them. Marie, would you like to talk about any of them in particular, or just go through them and approve and question?
If anyone has questions, we can answer them. One of them was a third read, I believe that was the, let me, I want to say. I'm sorry. The constricted, constraint, I don't want to say it. Physical restraint of students, that's the third read. And the concern for that one was there isn't a mention, and I don't know if either of you found it, because we were looking fiercely at the last meeting, but that CS.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we need to take it out. It needs to come out.
We took it out. I took it out because I couldn't find it.
Neither could I. I Googled for at least an hour and a half.
And it doesn't affect the policy as it was written. It just, it was called a CSN, it was like a medical term.
It had come from somewhere. It is some reference to some emergency form of some sort, but it can't seem to cite it. Not a form, an emergency procedure.
Right, but there was no good explanation of what type of procedure.
No, not, I agree.
So I just took that out. So that's the only difference to that policy is that that term added.
Okay.
So can I move JLCC communicable diseases?
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? The next one is JLCD administrating medicines to students.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, Chris?
So on the very end, there's the bullet point for the EpiPen. I'm just wondering why that's a separate bullet and why that's just not a number five under that? Because it's talking about instances where there's exceptions and students may self-administer.
Hold on.
This bullet, not those two. Why that bullet shouldn't fall into the hip hives?
Do you remember the reason?
I do not. I remember requesting number four to be added.
Well, it looks like all of the, it looks like all of the bullets have, the first bullet has Epi, they're in. The second one has stock nasal, which is something administered. The third one has nasal oxalone. So if the last bulletin has EpiPen, it looks like it's consistent with the number four bullet.
Yeah, so she's saying put it number five instead of bullet.
That last bullet has to do with self-administering an EpiPen, which actually follows under the bullet above it. So it would be the fifth item. So these are instances of medicines that would be self-administered with.
These are the exceptions.
So just, basically, you're just saying change the bullet to a number five.
Right, because as a parent of students with EpiPens, I'm reading through those four. I'm like, well, why don't they have EpiPen? And then I saw the next thing is the EpiPen, so it makes more sense to be within that.
I'm just glad it's in there.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it changes the substance of the policy at all, just the organization of it. Yep.
Would everyone be okay with approving it that way?
Sure.
Yeah, I move JLCD, moving the last dot to number five.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? The next one is JLD guidance program.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor? The next one is JM student awards and scholarships.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, Chris?
So in the second paragraph, it talks about the Penn Tuckett Scholarship Foundation. But it almost, like, I don't, I don't think that paragraph, I don't get what it's getting at. Because there's a lot of scholarships that we offer outside of the Penn Tuckett Scholarship Foundation. PAA offers them, BAF offers, like, there's a whole bunch of things. Whereas this, kind of the intention of that paragraph almost seems like, if you want to give our students a scholarship, you have to go through Penn Tuckett Scholarship Foundation. It's there as a tool. And yes, I agree that that makes sense if, you know, someone passed away and you want to dedicate a scholarship to them. It makes sense to work with the Penn Tuckett Scholarship Foundation. But it almost seems to not include other organizations that might want to provide scholarships.
Well, I think you could add something along the lines of, for example, such scholarships, some scholarships are managed and administered by the PSF. I think it's just saying there are other avenues to do it. So you certainly could kick in a little phrase that would just, I don't have any problem with this paragraph. It's saying, if you want to go out and establish a scholarship, go ahead. But they're not all associated with the PSF.
Right, but I think the way it reads now, almost.
We can adjust it.
It also says, "Awards may be managed by school administration and community organizations," which would include.
But the sentence before that makes it sound like, I think we need to change that sentence before so that it's not.
We did discuss this, actually. We liked about how all that gets managed, yeah.
Emily?
Could we change the word "are" to "may be?" And that way it doesn't.
Or even.
Some scholarships are managed and administered.
Like, have, have the first part, then a period after awards. And then, "Some scholarships are managed, managed and administered by the Penn Tuckett Scholarship Foundation."
That makes it sound like imperative, like they must be. When you say they are managed by.
Right, because they are.
If you change, but.
But I think maybe two separate sentences, not a.
Right, but you said that they're not all.
They're not all, no.
So if you.
But I think if you said some, so my intent of, "Some scholarships are managed and administered by the Penn Tuckett Scholarship Foundation. Some other awards may be managed by," like, like, I do think that they're a great resource.
How about we just add the word "other" before the word "awards"? Would that make sense? In the second line?
I still think in the second, two separate sentences. I think the first part.
Or two words, "some scholarships and other awards," two words.
Could we perhaps put this back for policy to, because we think.
No, I don't want to do that. This is what, this will end up being the third reading. The content here is absolutely perfect. The arrangement and how, and how we say it, I'm up for any edit on that at all.
Okay, so I'm going to say I'm going to vote against this, which is going to bring it back for a second read anyways. Because I, I just feel that it's saying, "All scholarships are through the Penn Tuckett Scholarship Foundation," which I know not to be the case.
All right, I'm going to move JM.
May I make an amendment to Mr. Hodges?
Go ahead. I'll take back the, the motion.
I would like to amend Mr. Hodges's motion to add the words, "Some scholarships and other awards," to his motion.
One moment. So that.
Where would you add that?
The front, the first and the second.
Second line, "Establish new scholarships and awards, comma, some." That's the one, first additional word, scholarships, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. At the end of the sentence, on the third line, "Other awards may be managed by the school administration, community, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." So I'm suggesting two words to this.
So can you read it as a.
Can you read the whole paragraph?
The Penn Tuckett Regional School Committee encourages citizens and groups in the community who wish to establish new scholarships and awards. Some scholarships are managed by, and administered by the Penn Tuckett Scholarship Foundation. Other awards may be managed by the school administration and community organizations. Information about establishing scholarships is available from the PR HS Guidance Office.
Needs a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. So we have Dick and then Wayne. Okay.
I thought as it was written, it was clear. But I think the amendment clears it up even more. Ironically, I got a call this week, somebody wanted to establish a scholarship. And they asked me how to go about it. And I used this exactly, the last line. Called the head of the guidance, and they'll show you how to establish a scholarship. So I thought it was clear, but I think what Mr. Beul did made it even clearer.
Any other discussion?
So grammatically, I do, I think it makes more sense now. I have to be honest, as someone who has not yet forayed into any of this stuff, it was not clear to me. When I read this before our meeting tonight, it made it sound like everything was under the guise of something called the Penn Tuckett Scholarship Foundation. So that's just like an outside view, but this clears it up, right?
Any other discussion?
All alone.
All in favor with the edit that Bill read? Question?
I'm opposed.
So it's going to have to go back to another reading?
This is the, this is not the first reading for JM.
It'll go back for third.
The, the next time we vote on this, it'll be the third. And I thought that if we have a majority on the second reading, it carries.
I believe that's the first reading.
All right, I'll take your word on that. I'm just hoping.
The next few, actually, I think it's the first.
I'm just hoping we finish the J's sometime by the year, you know, before the new high school is built, anyway.
Okay. The next.
Just ridiculous.
Okay, the next policy is JMA student meal account. Can I receive a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? The next policy is JQ student fees, fines and charges. Can I receive a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, Chris?
And I'm sorry that I'm bringing up questions, but that's part of the job, is that I have a question. In the first bullet, it says, and this is a conversation Greg and I have had quite a bit, "Charge students enrolled in certain courses for the cost of materials used in projects that will become the property of the student." I'm not quite sure I understand what that means. We've had a question about like English workbooks. They used to charge the students to pay for the English workbooks, like at the high school level. They write in them, they keep them at home. To me, that's part of your curriculum and part of the support for the curriculum. So I question whether we need to make that more definitive in a case like that. Yeah, I mean, that's one example. I'm sure there's other examples too.
I would think any college courses that students might take on campus might incur the cost of whatever is being taught. So if you have an online course or, I don't think, Mr. Lovett, do the students, do the students buy books for his class? So if it's a college course, the college requires this certain text. So that might be a place where expenses occur. We can investigate where expenses are.
I think one of the things in our discussion was something effective, and maybe this is a bit of a dated example. But if you, if you took a cooking class, for instance, and you needed to purchase, part of it was contributing $10 towards the purchase of the.
Ingredients.
The ingredients for, for the cooking class. Not that we offer cooking class, but as an example.
Like the photography and film, I think we use for stem and stem.
For instance, I think those are some examples, for instance. Right, and then you would take photographs, you'd end up keeping the photographs yourself, but.
How many, do, do we charge anybody anything right now?
Well, that's, that's the part that Chris and I covered, when it says, "Charge students enrolled in certain courses." I'm not really sure who's making the call on what those certain courses are.
And I think it's that inconsistent, I mean, my example is two years in a row. All right, you have to send in $10 for an English workbook. I'm like.
Now, we got rid of.
The district should be paying for the work.
We got rid of a ton of these little fees all over the place over the last three or four years. Because there were just so many of them. For, I mean, the example that Mr. Conway used, I would say the other way. If, if it's required that these kids need this in a general classroom setting, we should be paying for it. But if it's something else, if someone else wants to take an advanced course at a college or something, I could see where the discussion comes in, obviously. Because it's not something that just runs to the normal curriculum.
Or like 18 books have to be purchased.
Yeah.
That, that I think should be part of this policy, is, you know, why are we providing?
I think it's the word, and I agree with Chris, kind of, is the word "certain," kind of? Because every school does it differently? And it's hard to get a consistent level for it. And I'm not sure how you'd do it, because I'm not into that classroom mode the way some of you are. But I'm not, but I'm not sure how you'd want to say it.
So what money do we take in for courses at this point?
We don't take in much. I mean, it'll say, the AP books, some schools charge for the homework things. Some schools just buy it out of their budgets. It's, it's kind of inconsistent in how it gets done. That's why the word "certain," I'm like, I get it, "certain" gives you the flexibility, but I'm not, and I have no problem with flexibility, believe me. It's just how do we evenly apply it?
I think part of it, sorry.
Emily?
Emily has an idea.
I think the word "project" is part of the problem, because that makes it sound like a science fair project. Or I wouldn't, when you use the example of, you know, workbooks for an English class or books for a college class, none of those to me sound like a project. That sounds like course materials.
But it's the property of the student, I think. And I think part of this is my experience.
But, no, absolutely. I'm just saying, when I read this and when I read it, I thought it was talking about like hands, like post-it boards. And again, I have an elementary perspective on this, but I was thinking that they were talking about, you know, steam stuffs and they were going to create a model or whatever. And that, like, if they need to bring in some classical pairs to, if that's what they decided they wanted to do with that network available, that, that would be an expectation of student, in terms of a fee. Because that's a project that is standard. I don't disagree that still might be nitpicky, but I think that the topic that you guys are talking about, of course, which is, might be an additional bullet.
If, can I make a recommendation?
Please.
If we change the language here, because it seems like, like you said, there's a lot of inconsistencies. And the one way to make it consistent is to, if this, someone's going to charge for something, that they get approval of the superintendent or his or her designee. So if you're going to charge for it, we need to say, yes, that's okay. Because I know philosophically, I would be very much, I don't like charging for projects because not all students can afford it. You want to have equal access, equal opportunities. But at the same time, if you're going to go do something above and beyond, get, receive college credit, then yeah, there's going to be fees associated with that. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to provide a lot of those courses.
So one, one thought is if we read the paragraph following bullets, "All student fees and charges, both optional and required, will be listed and described annually in each school student handbook," which you've just approved. Or in some other written form and distributed to each student.
That'd be cool.
The notice will advise students that fees are to be paid and of the penalties for failure to pay them. I, you know, maybe a bullet, if you go back up to that first bullet point, if it was any fees of such require principal and/or, you know, superintendent's approval of which direction you choose to go, so.
I haven't had, I haven't had a child in school, obviously, in a while, especially not at the elementary level. We're not still sending home lists, like, please send your kid to school with glue and, really.
Cleaners.
Yeah, we have, there's a.
And wipes and sanitizer and pencils. And one subject notebooks and one.
You're talking about.
Well, not talking about homework supplies, that kids, kids can keep track of their stuff.
Supplies. But that, that's usually, so I, I don't know if I object to that, because that's, kids don't have it. Because it's, kids, they have their backpack and then they want their.
have it, because it's, kids, they have their backpack, and then they want their. When you're, like, spending, if you're, the first half of the month, then you send in a lot of tissues.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Bill had a question?
Yeah, I think, you know, if we speak about experience for the people that don't have children in high school yet, I remember the English teachers were pulling their hairs out, because they had very good vocabulary workbooks, and the first year, the principal instituted, the kids will write the answers on a piece of paper, not marking up the books where there's a very nice line where you can put the word in. Two-thirds to all of the kids ended up using the book. So it was charged as a late fee or a penalty in the following year, and then the other problem is that if you have a class where half the kids don't put the words in the book, put it on paper, and the other do, and then they come out with another addition, you're really skewering what the kids are doing. Upon occasion, I think even in this computer age, people are required to write and work foreign language, workbooks, unless it's online. So I think that, you know, this is a huge ant hill we're discussing right now, but I think that, you know, it's not something foreign or exorbitant or confusing or anything else.
I'm not confused.
No. So.
I think the way the superintendent said, they, you know, why don't we just assume everything's free until you ask the superintendent's permission to, whether it should be a charge or not?
I would move that amendment.
That one seems to be the way to apply it consistently, because it's coming from one source will apply it consistently.
Can you say the amendment again?
Okay, so what is the amendment? What are we changing here, so we can vote on it?
Well, let Dr. B.
Yeah, Dr. B. kinda said it.
Okay, so where are we adding that statement into that, to the end of all students?
Charge students enrolled in certain courses by, by permission of the superintendent, or something.
Yeah, the schools, however, may charge students enrolled in certain courses for the cost of materials used in projects.
Subject to the approval.
For cost of materials, comma, subjects to the approval of the superintendent or his, his or her designee.
I like it.
Just changing that first bullet.
Yeah. And I'm actually highlighting this right now to some principals.
Per the superintendent.
That whole part about the student handbook.
Yes.
Yes.
FYI. We've had a big discussion this morning, because every time we make the changes, how do we just kind of?
Okay, so can I?
I have, no, I still have two more points on this one. In the next bullet point, it talks about students who are indigent, like, how do we define that? Is that they receive free and reduced meals?
No.
Do they receive? So how do you, I guess, what's the definition of?
Can I ask you to put at the bottom, the definition of indigent?
Well, how are we defining it? Like, how do you?
We define, the federal free and reduced lunch program, some places do use that, we don't. What we do is, we use the Massachusetts Child.
Can you make it?
No, no, it's, there's a, in the childcare section of Massachusetts, every year, they do an updated sliding fee scale form. That's what we use. We don't make up our own, it says, you know, a family of four, and then after that, we apply it pretty simply across the board. If you make between zero and 25% of that number, you pay, you don't pay the fee, 25% and 50%, you pay 50%, 50 and 75%, you pay 75%, anything above that, you pay the full fee.
Right, and I, so I guess my point would be, how does Pawtucket classify those? Like, how do we figure out who those students are, according to this policy? Like, I think it just needs some kind of definition.
The only one who does that calculation is myself.
Yeah.
For all of it.
So the teacher, the kid comes in and says, well, we don't have the money. Like, what's the process to determine?
They, it's a really, well, I suppose they'd say, you ask the business office for the form.
So I think we need to somehow def, do you get?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I mean, there's the hardship form that comes, so if it's.
The free and reduced, the same as the free and reduced form, the parents.
No, no, totally different, totally different. It's very easy, actually, we made it much easier.
Applies for student, like, right now athletics, I think we probably have four or five.
But how do parents know that this thing exists? How are they informed? So how can parents be informed that this process exists?
It's in our, every year, we do an updated kindergarten fee policy and a fee waiver policy that's available.
It's also available with athletics.
So if you need it, it tells you the rules and who to send it to, and basically, it's a very simple little form to figure out and what backup you have to send with it, because I don't take anybody's word for it. Federal lunch program does, I don't.
All right.
So could we put an asterisk next to indigent, and then at the bottom, the asterisk, say, please see the business, the PRSD business manager or per the sliding scale managed by the business center, you know, like, who are obtainable at the business manager's office?
Yep.
Or students who are classified as indigent by the Pawtucket Business Office. Like, I just think we need to further define how those students are classified that way.
So, so how are we gonna vote?
Well, we have a motion on the floor for the first bullet, I believe.
Correct.
And then we can move to the second.
Okay, so we're going to, so we're not gonna vote on the policies at all? I didn't realize there was more edits.
I have another question. Tuesday, we can deal with it Tuesday.
Okay, so bring this up to another reading.
I have another comment and question.
Okay, well, we'll finish going through it and then table it.
So my third thing, and again, this is experience, so class dues, would class dues be defined in this? Because if you don't have your four years of class dues paid, you can't participate in graduation. Like, there's all these things. It's actually another issue, I think, beyond the fee issue that I have with class dues, but I guess my question is, would something like class dues be?
Do class dues play in this?
Class dues isn't waivable. It's kind of.
Not, no, not into, not into that. This is a separate for this policy.
I mean, I think that's up for a school committee to decide whether you want to add class dues in there or not.
Well, I just didn't know if the attend, if we consider a student fee. Yes.
Yeah.
So that's purpose.
Well, it's in the handbook, too.
But it's not, it's a, it's a class fee, it's not a school fee. We don't, if you don't want to pay it, you don't have to go at all those things, it's not.
But if you don't want to pay it, you can't graduate.
You can graduate.
Well, you can't.
Participate in graduation.
You cannot participate in graduation, if you have not paid your class dues, which, like I said, that's a whole nother issue I think we need to talk about, but.
Wayne has his hand up. Wayne?
So we can move on from this, because it looks like we're gonna table it anyways.
Yeah, so I think everything's been bright forth, so we're gonna table it for another reading and the policy subcommittee, can they visit it? On Tuesday. The policy sub, we're gonna table this? So, do I need a motion to table, or?
Just a motion to table when the discussion starts.
Okay, that's it.
So who's making the motion to table?
I'm motion.
Oh, I didn't hear you, sorry. And Bill? Okay.
I'm motion to table policy, student fees, fines, charges. First, if reading ahead.
Yes.
Okay, so the next item on the, I'm sorry, the next policy is J.R.A. student records. Can I receive a motion?
Move J.R.A.
Second? Is there a second?
I think.
Okay, discussion?
Yes.
Chris?
So, reading this policy makes it sound like it's more to do with paper, paper records? Does it also cover any electronic records? Okay, so would we need to make sure that both, that it's understood that both are included within this policy?
I think it's the laws, if you're asking, I think that, asking for sort of a, not that I'm the, not that I'm the district's attorney, but, but the, the law defines, Massachusetts law and FERPA defines records as both physical and electronic. I don't know that our policy needs to define it further, because the laws define it that way. And those are more about, like, updates and rulings on those laws, some of those laws are actually quite old, and there's just been either amendments or clarifications on the law and how it applies.
But the piece that's like, that they'll be deleted or getting rid of, whatever.
The 60 years.
Destroyed.
There's notification in them.
So does that also cover electronic, or isn't there, like, there's a seven-year thing?
Yeah, seven years is a temporary record, and then it's, what, 60, 60 years.
So is that also for electron, I mean, as we're just moving into the electronic age, I'm just wondering whether we need to.
Yeah, right now.
Is it the same for both?
So our attorneys.
Do we ever really delete electronic records?
Our attorneys brought this up yesterday at our meeting and mentioned, they didn't get into the electronic pieces, but did mention the seven and 60, that just proper notification has to go out, and then once notification's out, you can destroy. I don't know how you destroy most things of electronic record. But I.
Now, now.
Yeah, yeah, there'll be a way. So ultimately, your question is, when we talk about records, basically, it seems to be like it's.
Like, I, I mean, this is, it's paper, paper records, and do we have a higher level of care that we need to have with electronic records, too? I don't know.
I don't read this as being paper, it doesn't really specify.
Yeah, I see paper's specific.
It can be destroyed no later than usually.
Just to start the set, I move that we approved J.R.A. as written.
Emily said, Wayne, did you have any question, because your hand was raised?
Second.
I think Wayne had his hand raised, and I think it's only fair to give what Wayne has to say.
Not for this one. I wanted to backtrack just for one second, because there's some confusion among some members, so I think we need to backtrack, but not after this. So you just put a motion on the floor that we should address, and I could have just 30 seconds after.
Of course. Okay, so we had a motion on the floor by Dick, and then second by Bill to approve his policy. All in favor?
Yes or no, Chris?
Opposed.
So which reading is this?
First.
So it's gonna have to be back for a second reading. So Wayne, did you want to discuss?
No discussion, just a point, please, sir, because I think there was some confusion when we, as a group, said we'll table it for next time. We got the motion, but we just didn't take a vote on the motion, so took some people by surprise, formally should vote, tabling the motion.
Okay, I thought.
For J.Q.
Okay, so I guess we have to go back and vote on tabling policy, J.Q. student fees, I'm sorry, student fees, fines, and charges?
Which is J.Q.
Whistle was tabled by Marie. So do I need a second?
And second by Bill.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, tabling?
Thank you.
Was everybody in favor?
Opposed.
Okay. Dick, no, and Bill, no?
No, Bill, yes.
Oh, Bill, yes, okay.
All right, the next policy is J.R.A.R. student records. Gonna have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? The next policy is J.R.D. student photographs. Can I please have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Next policy is J.F.D., district family engagement policy. Can I please receive a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? The next policy is J.K.A.A., physical restraint of students, it's up for the third reading. Can I please receive a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to read, this is the one that we took that, confusing, because I had that, held it up for the third reading, yeah. That was the only change we made.
Thank you. Can I receive them? I'm sorry, all in favor?
I like how that's a separate reading. I really don't understand none's purpose.
So the two that are gonna be up for other additional readings is J.M. and J.R.A. Okay, and the policy subcommittee meetings, the next one is gonna be held Tuesday morning in the middle school green room.
Yep, at 11:00, I think.
At 11:00? Okay, and everybody's welcome to attend, you don't have to be on the policy subcommittee. The next item on the agenda is the school committee meeting schedule for fiscal year 20. It's included in the packet. Everybody's had a chance to review it. Can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Emily?
So I was wondering if there's any chance that we could start our meeting setting earlier or better? We used to do one a month, but I know of subcommittees, so they weren't, they were revolving from 5:30 or 5:40, 5:00 on, but we have a lot of policies and a lot of really needy stuff that we've been getting to, and thusly, we've been running later, and I was wondering, would we be inconvenient to start a little earlier?
So what time are you thinking?
I would take any minutes I can get, because I have to get up pretty early, so.
Six?
Six. Six would be fantastic.
One of the two at six, the other at 6:30?
I'd say I'd like to keep it all consistent. I don't want to be doing it all over the place, I just, I myself find that to be very difficult.
So as an example, if it was 6 o'clock, we'd be talking about our finance sign-offs at 5:45.
Correct.
Yeah, bump everything.
I'm fine with that.
I'm, I'm gonna have trouble with that, just because I'm back to not having a licensed driver in the house, and my youngest daughter starts everything at 6 o'clock, so.
Should we take a vote?
Not to be contradictory, I, I like the six, 6:30, I think it works, so I would like to make a motion to schedule alternate school committee meetings, the first one of the month being at 6 o'clock, the second one of the month being at 6:30.
I thought we wanted to be consistent. Yeah, I'm not, I, I'm gonna vote no on that. Is there a second, too?
So, Madam Chair, are you looking for continuity? Is that what you're?
I would like continuity, I just, I think it's very difficult to be meeting all the time at different times, and keeping people's schedules straight, and things like that. I mean, 6:15, if you want to make it an even medium.
I could modify it to 6:15.
Finance being at 6 o'clock?
Marie?
I think 6:15 would be better, because I, I have children that I just, I'll be late every time.
I mean, I know it's only 15 minutes, but.
Yeah, but sometimes that allows us to drop off at 6:00 and then get here. I couldn't do finance at 6:00.
Okay.
But I can do stuff, I can stay after or come in early.
Okay, so can I receive, does 6:15?
We have a motion.
Okay, so, so you have a motion, so can I have a second? The 6:15.
Emily's second.
Emily, all in favor, 6:15, meeting at 6:15?
One of the two.
Okay.
No, all of them, we're keeping it consistent.
That's your motion.
My motion was the alternate, but if you want to do, I would be happy to make a second amendment to have all the school committee meetings meet at 6:15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on six fifteen? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is update on staffing. Dr. B?
Sure. So as of right now...
Excuse me, did we vote the schedule? Oh, the dates are, the dates are okay? I apologize, I forgot with the whole thing. That's okay. We have a motion, Bill and Emily. Is everybody good with the, the dates themselves? So if it's school vacation week, you know, that has to be bumped back a week for February and April, but other than that, they're all the first and third Tuesdays in the month. So everybody's okay with that?
When do we start the six fifteen, Madam Chair?
The next meeting, which will be September 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
Speaker Assistant, start of the school year, six fifteen meetings. Okay, all in favor? Good, good.
I'm in favor.
Thank you, sorry about that. Okay, update on staffing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at this time, Penn Tucket has all classroom teachers in place. There are, I believe, a couple parapositions that are still vacant. One, we just got, we just got one resignation today on a clerical. So, but it, that whole experience, resources, is so much better here at Penn Tucket, and I think the fact that we filled quickly really speaks volumes. People want to work at Penn Tucket. They very much appreciate what we're doing, the work we're doing, the children and the support that they have in the building. So just wanted to share that in terms of staffing.
New, new teacher orientation.
Starts tomorrow morning.
The next two days, and I think we're, we're bringing the new teachers to the school committee.
Yes, we are.
September?
You'll get to see them all. Well, we were gonna do the first one, but we felt that was...
They'll be excited to know it starts at six fifteen?
And they come in.
Ms. Na, it's, it's one of the, one of the meetings. I know the first being September 3rd that we have.
Yeah, I think we, we, we're going.
We put it to seventeen, we did not want to...
First day of school.
Run them all. But yeah, so I'll, I'll be doing the intro tomorrow, the new teachers over, and I think they're starting at page. So it'll be fun. And Ms. Thomas, they, they do just a great job.
So Ms. Thomas was a finalist for a super, for Teacher of the Year way back.
I remember that.
Was she?
Late 90s, yeah, when I was teaching with them.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
She's, she's conducting it with Trina Forrest.
Yep. She's always, she stops in all the time, is always tinkering.
But you were talking about the Mass Teacher of the Year, and we haven't had people.
So she just wanted to...
I think that may be one of the last ones. Oh, Hillary Seager, too, I think was.
There's also an assistant principal and a principal award as well.
Yeah, he might have sent that in. They received, they received the nomination. Yeah, I remember the nomination going in, yeah.
Okay, so can you please have an update on the building project?
Absolutely. So we are constantly meeting, working, the working group is every other Thursday. But the bigger news was that last Tuesday?
Oh, we went to Boston?
Yes, we went to Boston. And while we were in Boston, it was Mr. LeBrecq, myself, Mr. Adams, and Ms. Perouse, our accountant, and we were at the, treasure, sorry. And we were at the, we had the Department of Revenue, as well as the State, State Auditor's Office, and they were interviewing us, or it was a board panel, asking us questions about our finances. But the end result was that we're able to go out with our two-way rating, which is fabulous for...
Double A two.
Sorry.
That's the state's bond rating.
So we're using the state's bond rating in order to acquire, 50 million is the first chunk of money, is that right?
Right, but they approved 92 million.
Yep, so. We're, we're doing 50 million this time, and the next time, we don't have to go through this process.
Right.
We just got the 42.
That's good. Thank you, Greg, for all your help, I know. It's a lot of piles of paper, got us to that point.
He had a lot of piles, and he did a lot of going around to the towns, helping them out wherever they needed to help, but getting, make sure they had the information. So it was a great collaborative effort by all three towns, and obviously, Mr. LeBrecq at the head of that, making sure that happened, so.
Thank you.
It was also entertaining to walk into the auditor's office.
Oh, God, here we go.
And the very first person in that office looks at him and says, sits up and says, now you behave.
But did he?
Uh, yes, yes.
I'm asking for 92 million, even I will...
Behave.
He did a very good job. But that's, that's where we are. We're meeting tomorrow with the coaches to discuss locker rooms, I'm sorry, with Doran Whittier and the coach to discuss locker rooms. There's a lot of detailed stuff on the entry that's being discussed right now. We haven't gotten really to all the classroom spaces, but in October is when all that comes to a close. So Doran Whittier's having to work pretty quickly.
Just to follow up on the rating, we were supposed to get our Moody's rating for the district this afternoon. It didn't come through yet. I just got an email from her saying she hasn't heard. Hopefully, we'll get it tomorrow. We are due to use the state tour, double A three, which is one drop below a double A two, but I figured we'd give it a shot anyways, just to see what we could do on our own with our ratings call, so we'll see how it goes. It's a lot of money for a district this size, so I don't think we'll move, I don't think we'll move the ticket, but I was just curious.
That's good.
Okay. That's it?
Yep.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is public comment. There's nobody here. So I... Any other question?
Yeah, I have a comment. Earlier, when Marie had made all those editings on the policies, and the principals had taken them home, Mr. Conway had a suggestion that I agree with, but I'm not sure it's being followed up, and somewhere in the handbook to say, if you wanted updates of the policies, please refer to, I think that's a good solution to cover the bases of the policies that are in the handbook that aren't really updated. So my question would be, does everybody feel that was a good suggestion, and are we going that route, and who's gonna follow up to see that it is?
It was an excellent suggestion, but we probably won't be through J until...
Right.
Yeah, I think that it's a statement on the website where you find the policy, and that any references to school committee policies in the handbook should always be cross-ref, cross-checked to the, to the...
Yeah, we'll facilitate. Right now, as, I'm writing it right now. For any references to school committee policies, please cross-reference with the updated policies on the school district website.
As school committee continuously revises policy.
And that, I'm just, I'm sending this to all the principals right now to make sure they put that at the front of their handbook.
So it'll be printed in the, in the handbook as well, but we'll put it on the website as well.
And I didn't make a note of it, but they can do the notice tip somewhere, and that would be good.